You can begin.
Okay. Well, good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Austin Peay State University Special Call Board of Trustees Meeting today. We've got a couple of really important topics to cover, and I'd ask McCartney to kick us off with the call of the role, please.
In accordance with Tennessee Code 8-44-108, Section C3, I have two questions to ask you if you could answer for the record as I call the role. Are you able to hear us clearly so that you can participate in this meeting? And two, please identify any persons present in the room with you. Trustee Atkins?
Yes, both.
Trustee Canata?
Yes, and there is no one else in the room with me.
Trustee Hogan?
Yes, and I'm lonesome.
Thank you. Trustee Mike? Trustee May?
Yes, and yes.
Trustee McKinnis?
Yes, and there's no one in the room with me.
Trustee Miller? Trustee Miller?
All right, it would not mute. Yes, I can hear you, and no, there's no one here.
Trustee O'Malley?
Yes, and I'm alone.
Trustee Wadia?
Yes, and my wife is working on Austin Peay business within earshot.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have a quorum. I'd be happy and proud to announce that the board's trustees have selected Storback Search and Associates to serve as our search firm for the next president of Austin Peay State University. Julie T., a partner in the search firm, will share now with the board the timeline and search process for the presidential search. So Julie, it's all yours.
Perfect. Thanks so much, Chairman O'Malley, and good morning, everyone. Once again, it is a delight to be among you, however, virtually, and I hope that you and yours are safe and healthy in these challenging times. I'm joined, as I mentioned before, by my colleague, Brian Buston, one of our most talented senior associates who'll be working with me on the search. You'll hear from him in just a moment. I can't tell you how thrilled we are to be partnered with Austin Peay on this crucial search to identify your next great president. As you may know, I worked on the very recent provost search at the institution that brought Maria Cronle into your folds, and I honestly count that search as among one of my most fulfilling in my 14-year consulting career. You have an extraordinary community at Austin Peay and one that Brian and I are so excited to champion out in the marketplace and build a great pool for you for this search. Today, in addition to sharing the timeline and process, we did want to start by just offering up a little bit about the team that will be serving you, about our record, which we hope you will find reassuring, and then, of course, about the process and our tailored approach to Austin Peay. And I hope that you won't hesitate to share any questions that you might have. As I speak, we do want this to be your time and for your benefit, so please don't hesitate. And I'm going to go ahead and share my screen, so if you could bear with me for just a moment. I think that McCartney did offer you these slides in advance, but I'm going to share them with you nevertheless. So just a bit about our firm, very robust practice, a team of 50 across the country. We work almost exclusively in higher education, and a third of our work is presidential. So this is a space in which we feel very comfortable and we operate regularly. Ours is a female-founded and managed firm, and from our very beginnings, we've been recognized for our progress with diversity, equity, and inclusion. More than 50% of our placements are women, and a quarter are coming from underrepresented backgrounds. We're also really pleased and proud of the longevity of our placements, and 85% of our presidential placements since our firm's founding 13 years ago are either still in office or serve for five years or more before moving on to another role, typically another presidency. And then, 2/3 of our searches are conducted for returning clients, and we're proud to say that Austin Peay is one of them. We recently, in this last year, joined the Diversified Search Group, and what that means for Austin Peay is that you'll have the benefit not only of our very significant network, but now too, the networks of four other executive search firms, which have tentacles into the nonprofit and foundation worlds, in medicine and financial services, and industries of all kinds. And so our hope and expectation is to be able to bring you some really interesting out-of-the-box candidates with thanks to the partnerships that we now have through Diversified. There I am. Just a little bit about me. I grew up in a family of educators. My parents were both music educators, and I've long been passionate about education. I've built my career in higher ed 25 years strong now, and the last 14 years have been spent in higher ed search consulting. Prior to that, I worked on two different college campuses, at the University of Richmond and then also at Georgetown University. And when I was at Richmond, I worked in a president's office for seven years, and there aided with a presidential search and transition. And so I know firsthand what it feels like on a college campus to go through a presidential transition, and I'd like to think that I bring a sensitive lens to that work. And I also love my work, so you'll be getting high-energy and devoted practice from me throughout the search. Brian, I'd love to have you chime in here and just speak a little bit about yourself and also the role you'll play in the search.
Thank you, Julie. Good morning, everyone. My name is Brian Buston. I'm a senior associate with Storbeck Search. This is my 10th year in executive search, my fifth year at Storbeck, joining from a different executive search firm. I've specialized completely in higher education. I've done a number of presidential searches and searches at all levels, public, private institutions, and I'm really excited to be part of the team here, working with Austin Peay State University. My part in the search will be kind of a key contact for the search committee in addition to Julie, but also kind of really touching base with prospective candidates and nominations throughout the country, telling a great narrative, a great story about Austin Peay State University, and really getting them excited about the perspective of being your next president.
Super. Thanks so much, Brian. Joining us in spirit today are Dominique Troilo, who is the senior search coordinator. She worked on the provost search, so she knows the institution well. She's going to work hand and glove with McCartney Johnson, who is the search secretary, and providing draft meeting materials, aiding with all of the scheduling, and so you will see her name throughout the search, and her work is top-notch. Matt Danalfo and Jay Beckham are our extraordinary research associates, and they will be helping us with candidate generation and vetting. And they are particularly key when we've got a specific question on a candidate, and we need to do some deep digging. We call them our secret ninjas, and they're excited to be working with Austin Peay as well. So you've got a team of five here devoted to the work, plus the resources of the full firm. Here is just a sense of the breadth of our experience. In just the last five years, we've conducted presidential searches for these public institutions. We're sure that you see some familiar names there and maybe some institutions against which you compete or benchmark. Moreover, we've developed a really strong presence in the Mid-Atlantic and Southeast, and so some familiar names here, I'm sure, as well. And just speaking very briefly about the market for presidential candidates and who you might expect to see in this pool. First of all, there's been a great graying of the college president. I think the economic downturn in 2008 compelled a lot of folks to stay longer in their careers, and so almost 60% of current presidents are above the age of 60. And we are just now seeing the tip of a retirement wave. We've certainly seen an increase in the number of retirement announcements, but we're really pleased. We think that Austin Peay is beautifully positioned. You're just ahead of this curve, and I think we'll have a great chance to find your top candidate in what is going to become an increasingly competitive market with many other institutions searching. We've seen an increase in the number of women coming into presidencies, now standing at about 30%, and we know you had a very distinguished female president in Elisa White serving, and so you've got a track record there yourself. Smaller increases in the number of underrepresented candidates coming into presidencies, but still progress being made there. These are complex and challenging jobs, maybe more so now than ever, and so the average tenure of a university president is roughly five to seven years now. And I think that's also why we're seeing so many second- and third-time presidents, because they're moving on after having felt they accomplished something of value at their institution. And now we're going to talk just a bit about pathways to the presidency. And the majority of presidents are coming from within higher education, 85%. 15% are coming from outside of higher education, but they usually have some kind of unique tie to the college or university. Maybe they've been a trustee, or an advisory board member, or an adjunct faculty member, executive in residence. Usually, they have some appreciation for the culture of higher education, the value of shared governance, and that can make them, you know, a credible potential candidate. We are seeing, as I mentioned, an increase in sitting presidents in our pools. The provost role is still the most common pathway to a presidency, with about 43% of presidents having held that role as chief academic officer. But we're also seeing now the emergence of other VPs, particularly from the revenue-generating sides of the house. And so for institutions that are really tuition-driven, candidates that have shown a prowess for building revenue have been faring well in pools. So vice presidents for fundraising, vice presidents for enrollment management, chief financial officers are increasingly being seen in our pools. And then also, too, deans of very complex schools or colleges that might frankly have a portfolio that pretty similarly mirrors a college presidency. So, all that to say, our goal will be to present the search committee with options. And just to illustrate what we've been talking about, here are some of my own recent presidential placements, and you'll see there, we recently placed a former president from the University of Toledo, Sharon Gaber at UNC Charlotte, Rick Kubik, Jennifer Ward, and Idrma Basara were all chief academic officers. Dan Lugo and Philly Mantella were on the revenue-generating side of the house at their respective institutions, and Ken Gormley was a long-serving dean of law before moving on to the presidency at Duquesne. So there's a track record there, and we will be taking our cue from the search committee as to what will work best for Austin Peay. So now, moving on to talking about the presidential search process. Before I get into too much detail, what I want to emphasize is that this is going to be an open, inclusive, and transparent process. There will be regular communication from Chairman O'Malley to the Austin Peay community about the progress being made in the search to help quell curiosity and keep you all apprised of progress being made. The final phase of the search will be open to the campus community, and so campus community members will have an opportunity to meet with the leading candidates and also to share their feedback with the search committee members, which I know will be embraced. We promise a nimble process, knowing that we're in unprecedented times with sound use of technology, and we know firsthand the strength of the technology that the university has to offer. We've benefited from it. And you'll see an aggressive timetable, but one we feel is doable, to enable you to identify your next president by the end of this calendar year, or as soon thereafter as possible. And so here are some key benchmarks in the search. We're already, hard to believe, but in the month of August and before the end of this month, our goal is to have a series of stakeholder conversations, and that's speaking with students, faculty, staff, alumni, trustees, community members, learning about the strengths, challenges, opportunities at Austin Peay, and also what you're looking for most in your next leader. Brian and I are going to begin to develop the position description based on what we hear, and we'll work in close concert with the team and marketing and communications to develop a really compelling marketing document for the search. And we'll formulate our strategy, get a sense of who we want to bring into the pool, and talk through that with the search committee. We'll then begin aggressively recruiting candidates in September, and that's a multi-pronged process. Personal outreach is, without a doubt, the most successful way. We get the strongest candidates into the pool, so Brian and I are going to be feverishly working the phones and email to have individual conversations with leading candidates. We'll also be broadly advertising, advertising and outlets to help us build a diverse pool, like Women in Higher Education, diverse Hispanic outlook, and the like. We'll be relying on Austin Peay's own networks, and so encouraging the full community to be thinking of candidates and tapping those, and of course, relying on our teams at Storbeck Search and the Diversified Search Group for ideas. We'll have a really important check-in meeting at the end of September, where the search committee will get access to the candidate portal, and we'll actually present some candidates to them to gauge reaction, and what are they excited to see about how the pool is shaping up? Where is there more work to do? And so we'll hone and refine our strategy based on what we hear at that critical check-in meeting. And I'm sure that it's no surprise to you, but it's never too early to be thinking about how to onboard the successful candidate and how to optimize the time between, you know, when the appointment is announced and when the person starts, as well as envisioning their first several months in office. And so we'd like to give some strategy and shaping around transition plans. And I'm sorry, did someone have a question? Okay, so moving on, in October, the committee's going to meet and actually select a group of candidates, probably eight to 10, for first-round interviews. Those interviews will take place in early November. Then, that group will be narrowed down to probably five or six candidates who will be advanced for a second-round interview with the search committee. And concurrent with the second-round interviews will also be referencing calls with people the candidates have identified with whom they've worked closely as a means for us to learn more about them. After the second round of interviews in late November, the leading candidates will be selected, probably three or four. And then, the finalists' visits are slated to take place in December. Usually, that would involve perhaps a visit from a spouse or significant other as well. These are crucial family decisions, and we would like the significant other or spouse to have an opportunity to see the campus and meet some folks as well. It is as much recruitment as it is evaluation at that point. We'll be doing deep background checks on the leading candidates. Please rest assured, no stone will go unturned. And then, the search committee will meet to formulate its final report for the board, and then the decision will rest in the board's hands to select the next president. And ideally, then, the public announcement and celebration would take place, and the search would be successfully closed, and you'd be moving on then with your candidate of choice, imagining how to get that person off to the best possible start for Austin Peay. The next few slides, I am happy to touch on, but I'm also happy to pause here and have Brian and me take any questions that you might have to offer. We often get specific questions about how we would build a diverse pool, all of the vetting that is involved when evaluating the candidates, and how we're addressing current needs. But I've been talking a lot, and I want to have you share any questions that you might have of us based on what we've offered. Does that sound good, Chairman O'Malley?
That's perfect, Julie. Thank you. I do have a question for you. With our current reality of COVID and the challenges that we currently have and that are yet to be seen going forward, is it realistic? I mean, what's your real sense that a January timeframe is a doable timeframe? And does that potentially limit a great candidate that may not want to leave their current institution mid-year?
Sure. It's a thoughtful question. So first of all, I'll say, we have kept, you know, more than 55 searches successfully moving forward in these challenging times, and we have continued to build robust and interesting pools for our candidates, maybe our clients, rather. I will say, it has taken us sometimes more effort to get a candidate to commit to applying, simply because they are so distracted by the cross pressures at play in responding to the pandemic and reopening their campuses. They just simply don't have the bandwidth to engage with us, but we're persistent, and that's also why you partner with a firm, is to have a team that is dedicated to building that pool and tireless in its approach. We're also finding that regardless of the external factors, you know, there are some people who, this is their moment, you know, their kids are finally out of the nest, and this is the year that they could make a move, and they've been priming themselves for a presidency, and so they're uniquely committed to seeing that through. So we have confidence that, you know, with dogged determination, we'll be able to build a good pool here. Also recognizing, though, particularly with sitting presidents or people who may have been at their institution for a significant period of time, that there could be a real challenge to loyalty in exploring another opportunity right now, and feeling that they can't leave their institution in a lurch in a time of crisis. So all throughout the process, Chairman O'Malley, what we pledge to you is just to be as transparent as possible about what we're hearing from prospective candidates. And if we need to elongate the timetable because you're just simply not seeing the talent that you want to see in the candidate pool, then that will be the call of the search committee. But we promise full transparency there, and we'll be candid with you about what we're seeing and hearing. It could be that you might find an ideal candidate, but that person is not going to be able to start when you would want that person to start. Our hope would be that you would be open to doing what was necessary to keep a great person on the hook, you know, and not lose someone over, you know, what could be a handful of months or a couple of months delay. So again, it's hard to predict, but best practice in the past will tell us how this will likely play out. And again, we'll stay in constant contact with you about what we're hearing.
Well, thank you, Julie. I think that's the goal of the board and the search committee, is that we find the best candidate at the end of the day, and that a timeline, while it's a part of the process, it's not the most important part of the process. The goal is to have the best candidate. So thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Question, Julie. This is, I'm Katherine Canata.
Hi, Katherine.
I was really intrigued at the beginning, when you were speaking, you said that the recent hiring, search and hiring of our new provost at Austin Peay was one of your most, I think you said, rewarding projects since you've been doing this, or something really spectacular. And I just wondered, what about that particular search in Austin Peay stands out to make it the most rewarding appearance for you?
Oh, I'm going to try to not get choked up. I, first of all, it was an extraordinary committee that was really uniquely devoted to the process, and it basically, about a third of the way in, we had to go fully remote and virtual with the process. And the committee pivoted beautifully. We had tremendous support from Mitch Robinson's office and his team. And so the commitment to seeing the process through and to still enabling Austin Peay's light to shine in challenging circumstances was wonderful. I would hearken back to the site visit where my colleague Julie Williams Christian and I had an opportunity to meet with key stakeholders and also take a campus tour. Hearing about the students that are served by Austin Peay and their unique stories, your commitment to working with first-generation students, Pell-eligible students, your commitment to serving those who have served, and the commitment to active military and the veteran population is extraordinary. The diversity of your student body is notable and commendable. And just to show you a little bit about the character of your student body, the search committee member who is the president the search committee member who was the president of the student body at the time, Sydney, and her last name is escaping me, was a total delight. And as part of the tour, they wanted to take us to the community food bank that was on campus. And so we heard about how, how many people that food bank serves throughout the year. We spoke with the manager of it and that really drove home for me, the soul of the place. And this is a place I can be very proud to represent.
Thank you.
Hey Julie, how are you?
Great. Good to see you Mickey.
And Brian, thank you both of you for your search and your faith in Austin P. I just want to make a couple of points and perhaps throw in a question over here at the same time. You're going, you're, you're getting people very invested in Austin P. I think pretty clear. You know that already from the provost search. And I believe the current search committee also will be very, very engaged in the process. Many faculty that I've spoken to and I personally also believe this is more than an aggressive timeline. It is a super aggressive timeline to me. And I was looking at the slides that were sent to us in the materials. And it says in mid to late August that you're going to be conducting the site visit where the consultants meet with BOT, Board of Trustees members and other campus constituencies. Is this going to work out in such a way that, that you will be able to accomplish that? Given the fact that this week, classes are beginning on August 24th and you're going to have to get in the middle of the first week of classes to try to grab a large swath of the campus? How might that work for you? That be, that's question number one. The, I'm concerned about the aggressiveness of the fast tracking of the timeline, that we won't get the very best person. And is there an abiding reason to have someone in place in January? So that, that's my broad first question. Number two, if we don't find somebody or nobody accepts or is unwilling to move in the early part of spring 2021, would Storeback in fact be continuing to work then throughout spring 2021 in order to continue the search in case the first search process didn't work out for whatever reasons, you know, all the things we talked about pandemic, loyalty, somebody doesn't want to leave mid-year, all of those things. If they didn't work, would you continue to, is that part of the plan? To help us through the spring if need be and the search committee also then continues this work? I hope I haven't asked too many questions here, but I think there were like two basic things that we're trying to get at.
Sure. Thank you for the thoughtful questions Mickey. So we've already been in conversation with McCartney, the search secretary with regard to, and also with Chairman O'Malley's blessing of the array of groups and individuals with which we'd like to speak to learn more about the opportunity. We're going to look to timeness as optimally as we can for maximum participation from the campus community. Brian and I have lots of one-on-one phone calls. We can be knocking out with, you know, direct reports to the president, trustees and the like in our information gathering that can be taking place as the new semester is getting up and running and faculty and students are getting their grounding. So we feel we can pace this accordingly and thoughtfully. We, we want optimal attendance and participation so we can feel like we're building a process that people can have faith in and also to learn as much as we can. So please rest assured that will be very carefully considered. And we have a call scheduled for early next week to do just that. We are absolutely committed to Austin P. It's in our contract with you that we will see this search to, through to successful conclusion. And I'm proud to say in my 14 years of consulting that I've done, you know, just that with my clients. And so if we need to prolong the timeline due to these extraordinary times, you know, we'll do what we need to do for you to be excited about the choices that you have. With regard to the interest in having someone identified by the end of the calendar year for ideally a start in early 2021, I'll, I think I need to defer to Chairman O'Malley on that, but I promise you we'll stay as nimble as we need to stay on our end.
Thank you.
And to address Mickey, your thoughts on the kind of aggressiveness of the timeline. As Julie mentioned before, it's become a very, very competitive atmosphere for, for top tier talent and kind of the right candidate at the right time. And there will be a number of presidential searches kicking off at the same timeline. Really looking to end around the same point there in December. It's kind of become the new norm of executive search. So we want to ensure that Austin P State University, the community, the search committee, and ultimately the Board of Trustees has the best options available. We don't lose candidates due to, to a timeline. And as you mentioned, you have, if for any reason, we would have to, you know, move the search further along there into the spring semester, having this timeline allows us to do that if needed versus if we moved into, you know, April or May and for any reason the search didn't work out, you'd really be forced to move into the next year.
Great point Brian. Thank you.
This is Carrie McKinnon. Hello.
Hi Carrie.
Hi there. Thank you for your time and help with the search. I know it's a big endeavor and I greatly appreciate it.
Absolutely.
The quality of the candidates with such a short timeframe. So my thought process is, as you mentioned earlier Julie, the bandwidth of people on the campus community that may be looking to apply to be a president, they may not have the bandwidth. So that makes me think that if somebody does have the bandwidth, then they might not be the best candidate. And so therefore the pool of potential candidates might not be as desirable as we would want because it is such a short timeframe and it's also due to the fact of the academic year just starting. So can you comment about that?
Happy to. I'll be honest in saying, I so often get this question at the outset of a search where there's always anxiety about the timeline and do we have enough time? Brian and I are already brainstorming about the prospect and sourcing list we're going to approach on this. We've already begun populating our database in anticipation of launching this search. Even while we're still crafting the position description and getting input from the campus community, we can be sending out emails and phoning people we know might be poised to make a move just to get this on their radar screen and get them thinking about it before the final document is ready for prime time. So there's a lot of late work that we're doing early so that we can get out into the market with an aggressive push. And so I feel confident about that. We will have several vetting conversations with the leading candidates before the search committee will even see them. And so we'll have a sense for the quality of the pool going in to that check-in meeting in September, late September. And we'll be candid with the search committee about where we might see holes or what we're excited about. Again, it's, it's going to be a constant conversation. I've successfully concluded presidential searches with more aggressive timelines. And so I know it can be done and done successfully. But these are unprecedented times and we'll just need to stay as light on our feet as we can. But Brian and I are both glass half full people and we're going to approach the search with a glass half full and move forward with optimism.
And I also like to say that we're typically not, we won't take no for an answer type of people as well. If a really great candidate is kind of pushing back on, you know, everything's on their plate, all their work with COVID-19 strategies, we'll definitely stay with them and make sure that they really give, have the opportunity to explore the position because they really, maybe something about their background aligns well with a mission or potential vision for, for Austin P. And we would like to get them in front of the committee.
Thank you. And then I'll also just add, this is my third Austin P Presidential Search Committee to be on in 30 years with Austin P.
Great.
So that's why I look so young, I guess. No, I'm just kidding. But I will say that I wanted to ask you, how many other presidential search committees are you actively working on at this current time?
This is, this is the only one right now. Brian?
Yeah, same for me.
You have our undivided attention.
Thank you.
Julie or Brian, any one of you can take this question. I'm curious because I don't work in a search firm and I don't have the experience, but based on your vast experience, can you identify from your perspective, in particular, a unique challenge in finding a president versus finding a provost? I don't think they're the same. I would not think they would be the same. There must be something different in a presidential search than a provost search because it seems like the position is more comprehensive in a variety of ways, which is why the search committee even looks so different than a provost search versus a presidential search.
Yeah, absolutely Mickey. It's a, a very different kind of candidate pool. I think we've seen an enormous change in the array of responsibilities falling on the shoulders of university presidents in the last 20 years. And the revenue generating piece, the strategy and vision piece have become so crucial. That in addition to being someone with a deep appreciation for the life of the mind and a rigorous academic experience and the interplay between faculty and students, you know, a president now has to be mindful of the full college experience, the, all of the aspects of, you know, student life outside of the classroom, how to fund this experience and have a terrific fiscal acumen as well as an eye for revenue generation. Has to be a gifted storyteller to bring new friends and steward longstanding friends of Austin P. And then given these extraordinary circumstances, even before the global pandemic, higher education was facing some really unique challenges. And so someone now who has an eye for the university of the future has an eye for what role technology is going to play in instruction, delivery and experience for students is going to be crucial. So the, the college presidency has become much more complex. Demands of leading candidates, a very diverse array of skill sets and terrific abilities of communication. And so we'll be looking to identify candidates who can check most, if not all of those boxes and exceed your expectations.
Also kind of the expectations of presidents, especially of public institutions, to be able to have that political savvy and relationship driven skills to work with government officials, but also really have a great understanding, have their finger on the pulse of, you know, global issues or definitely issues around our country. So somebody who really can extrapolate those core values and promote those core values of Austin P is a great representative of the university will be something sought after as well.
Thank you.
I think Brian just answered one of my questions. And I think if I understood you right, you may have answered the other question. A future president being involved with the students outside the classroom. I suppose you're referring to athletic department, student events on campus and all that type thing. But I, of what I hear from the community at large is, is a president that will work well with athletic department and really supports the currently we have a great athletic program going in a number of sports. That's going to be a big topic when we get all the search committee together and feedback from the community.
Yeah, a great point. There is no doubt that as part of the whole student and university experience, athletics plays a crucial role there. I don't know how many times I've, I've heard it's often the front porch for the university. And so having a candidate with experience, working well with coaches, working well with boosters, supporting the endeavors of student athletes will be crucial. And of course, all of the other aspects of a robust student life, the fine and performing arts, community service and the like, all will be critical. And so a highly visible, highly engaging person, I think is what's called for here. And I think the bar has been set pretty high for that at Austin P.
I agree. Thank you.
Sure. Other questions?
I guess you've done a great job of describing everything fully.
Super. Well, we're excited to work with you and we're grateful for the opportunity.
Thank you Julie. Does that conclude your overview then?
It does Chairman O'Malley. Thank you.
Great. Thanks. Well, great job to you and Brian for that overview of the search process and the timeline. For my fellow trustees who've now heard Miss T's explanation of the timeline and the search process, I move to approve the timeline and search process, knowing that circumstances related to COVID-19 could potentially alter that timeline and process. Do I hear a second?
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Thank you. And McCartney, please call the roll.
Trustee Atkins?
Yes.
Trustee Kanata?
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins?
Yes.
Trustee Luck? Trustee Luck, you're muted.
Still yes.
Thank you. Trustee May?
Yes.
Trustee McKinnon?
Yes.
Trustee Mueller?
Yes.
Trustee O'Valley?
Yes.
Trustee Wadia?
Yes.
You have nine yeses.
Very good. Thank you McCartney. Motion carries. In your materials, there was a copy of the Presidential Search Committee list that was approved by the university's Office of Equity, Access and Inclusion. I might add that the, my thanks to the Board of Trustees members for your efforts and your work. As we put together, what I think is a, I think what we all think is a really good list of, of people to serve on our search committee. So with that, I move to approve the Presidential Search Committee list as written. Is there a second?
A second.
Free McKinnon.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion about the search committee members? Hearing none. Secretary, please call the roll.
Trustee Atkins?
Yes.
Trustee Kanata?
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins?
Yes.
Trustee Luck?
Yes.
Trustee May?
Yes.
Trustee McKinnon?
Yes.
Trustee Mueller?
Yes.
Trustee O'Valley?
Yes.
Trustee Wadia?
Yes.
Nine yeses.
Thank you. Motion carries. Finally, as a reminder, our next regularly scheduled meeting will take place September 17th and 18th, 2020. For our regular Board of Trustees meeting. With that said, I move that we adjourn this special call meeting of the Austin P State University Board of Trustees. Is there a second? Is there a second?
Aye.
Thank you. It's moved and seconded. The meeting adjourned. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much everyone.
Thank you. Have a nice weekend.
Thank you Julie and Brian.